I suppose spring scene would say there's something happening somewhere.
Somewhere, something's happening.
Be with you in a minute, I have a technical difficulty here. All right, sorry about that. Let's call the meeting to order. Wendy, if you would please call the roll.
Paul Banks.
Here.
Pam Howard.
Here.
Lori Visda Ward.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Dave Levy.
Here.
Mark Sutter.
Here.
Jeff Swante.
Here.
All right, thank you. Jeff, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pam, if you would read the mission statement.
The Thompson School District will be a district that empowers, challenges, and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
Okay, sorry about that. We'll try to get ourselves together up here. Have chairs falling apart. Minor details. Get on the internet. Okay, here we go. First item on the agenda for tonight is the adoption of the agenda. I will entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. Are there any changes? Okay, hearing none. Wendy, do you call the roll, please?
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visda Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Aye.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swante.
Aye.
Thank you, and the agenda is unanimously adopted. Next is item 3.1, approval of minutes from our last meeting, September 18th, 2019. I will entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from September 18th, 2019. Are there any corrections or changes? Or additions? No? Okay. Wendy, if you would please call the roll.
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visda Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Aye.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swante.
Aye.
Thank you. Public participation portion of the meeting, were there any...? Nothing. Okay, all right. We will move right into superintendent's report, item 4.1, Dr. Schaefer.
Evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education. Last evening, our community celebrated a special groundbreaking of our new Career Technical Education Center at the Van Buren campus. We easily had well over 100 people. I almost said 200, I didn't count, but it was over 100. We'll go there. And these were students and teachers, community members, business partners, government officials. I want to give a special shout out. We had Loveland Mayor Jackie Marsh was there, Bertha Mayor Will Karsbeck was there, and we also had Representative Joan Nogus who was there who also spoke to us. I want to acknowledge our corporate sponsorship, Bank of Colorado, as well as the Thompson Education Foundation. So we're deeply grateful. It was just a really special evening, a lot of students displaying. We have well over 50 career tech ed programs that we sponsor here in the Thompson School District, and our career tech ed center is going to be absolutely unbelievable. So just a great kickoff. The contractors, construction is well underway, and we will be opening that next fall, the fall of 2020. So last weekend, I attended the Hearts and Horses Gala at the Embassy Suites Conference Center, and our school district really enjoys a very special relationship with this organization, hosting a number of our students in a therapeutic environment. One of the featured students, they did a video, and they featured a number of people that have been impacted by their program. And so one of them happened to be a Thompson School District student. She noted that her ability to take care of and ride horses have given her special confidence, and it really allows her to feel good about herself. It was a very, an emotional evening, just very positive. The work that they do is extraordinary, and again, we're grateful for that partnership that we have with them. Tomorrow, I will be attending the Loveland Community Kitchen Annual Breakfast, and the motto of the community kitchen is simply, "At Loveland's Community Kitchen, we believe that all should have access to food. Everyone is eligible here. There are no requirements to come in and join us for a meal." So the work that they do in our community is transformational for those that struggle with food and feeding themselves. And I know we have so many organizations within our community, nonprofits, that support. This is just one of them. And so I'll actually be attending with Pam Howard, and I'm not sure if other board members are going to be attending as well, but it's a great annual event. Finally, we have special guests this evening. So as part of our feature, where we feature schools from across our amazing district, tonight, we are going to feature the amazing school of Walt Clark Middle School. And so I'm going to invite our principal, Christine Smith, to come forward to the podium and also have your students join us.
Good evening, Madam President. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you a fabulous program that we have at Walt Clark. It's the Web Leader Program, where we empower eighth grade students to help with that sixth grade, fifth to sixth grade transition. I have with us six of our... Yeah. Six of our web leaders, as well as the coordinator of the program, Ms. Kimberly Hardwin. So I'll have her start, and we put a little program slideshow together for you.
Sorry, can you go to the mic?
Because we can't hear. There you go.
Okay. Thank you again for the opportunity to come and speak. As she said, I'm Mrs. Kimberly Hardwin, and I'm the coordinator of web at Walt Clark. And behind you, you can see, or in front of you, you can see the, basically the definition of what web is, and it stands for where everybody belongs. And it helps our sixth graders become comfortable with their middle school experience, and it allows the eighth graders to take a position of leadership and mentorship. These are some of the things that we do throughout the year. We have our training days, the Thursday and Friday before school starts in August, and that's where I get to have the privilege of training. This year, we had 42, 43 eighth graders who stepped up into these positions of web leaders, and we got to train them on how to be leaders and how to interact with the sixth graders. We had Orientation Day, which was the sixth grader's first day at Walt Clark, and they got to lead some small group activities and meet their sixth graders for the first time. In the fall, we always have the sixth grade dance, where we invite just the sixth grade class, and we teach them how dances go at Walt Clark. And the web leaders always have a fun time teaching them the dances on the stage and getting them used to the snack shack and the pizza and the photo booth and things like that throughout the year that they'll be seeing. We also assist with back-to-school night and assemblies. They have monthly check-ins, where they give their sixth graders locker notes. They send them emails. They pass by them in the hallway and just say, "Hey, how are you doing? How's school going?" On the 18th of October, we'll have our first advisory visit, where they push into the advisory classes that the sixth graders have, and they teach them a lesson. This month, we'll be teaching them about having a positive attitude. And then we have a winter party and a movie night. And then in the spring, we recruit new leaders, and they assist with that. And we have a field day outside when it's nice in the spring. And then we have our play date, where we start to introduce the new leaders to the activities they'll be doing in August. So it's a year-long program, and we're really proud of it. These are just some of the pictures of like the small group sessions that they get to do with their sixth graders, and some of the fun activities. We have, on Orientation Day, you can see Mrs. Smith popping a balloon on the chair there. That was part of the Orientation Day activities. And then they all receive a training certificate at the end of training, and then the one in the lower right corner is from our outside fun play day from last year. And I apologize, those are blurry, but these are just some other things that they get to do. They got to dress up in costume for a school tour on Orientation Day. So you can see the little Hawaiian lace there. They got to stop in at the office and meet the office staff. And then we also have what's called an A-Team, where I select about five of the seventh graders to help assist with Orientation Day, because it's a big endeavor. And so they are the future web leaders of the next year. They help out with the program behind the scenes. And I would love now to introduce to you Isaac Cooper, Abby, Josh, Dani, and John, to talk a little about how web is from their perspective.
So for web, my favorite part about it is bonding with the sixth graders. One thing we do is we put a note on the sixth graders' lockers or email them every single month of the entire school year. This month, my group is actually giving them candy corn as a little, like, thing that they can have, and it just makes me feel like I'm closer to them. Another thing is that when we have the small group, it gives all the sixth graders a chance in the group to make friends even before they are in the actual school with all the other classes. A thing that we did do is it's not only with sixth graders. We had an assembly, and that was for the seventh graders halfway through, and some of the sixth graders helped. I mean, eighth graders, web leaders helped them do that assembly. So, yeah.
Yeah, so kind of what she said. I really like web, because I get to meet so many new people through web. Like, some of the people that I had to work with through web during training, I've never talked to some of those people. And I met a lot of sixth graders that I've actually become really, really close friends with. One of them, me and her are actually going to go to the movies, because we're really close now. During training, we got these web binders, and I'm just going to pass it around if you guys want to see it. And they have a bunch of just stuff to help us with web and our, what do you want to call it? Our tour thing. So, yeah, and we put birthday stuff off, so when it's our birthdays, we do it. So Cooper did summer birthdays for our groups.
Yeah. Dani, or I, you're...
Josh.
Hi, my name is Josh Bellino, and I like web, because I like helping kids. I like being a role model for everybody, and I like making new friends. I have a pretty good relationship with my web kids, and I also feel like web makes a pretty good environment for the school, makes it feel a lot more happier. And then I send an email out every month. And then, I send an email out every month at the end, to, because if I talk to them in the hallways or something, you know, they're kind of rushed, and there's not really much they could talk about, versus an email, it can get kind of personal, if something's actually happening or not. And I also decorate their lockers for their birthdays as well, to make them feel special.
One of my favorite things about web is decorating people's lockers. Just this morning, I went and decorated one of my web, one of my web kids' lockers, and on Monday, I put up locker notes on everyone's locker to talk about Octobers coming along, and I plan to do that for November as well.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Cooper Burson, and I joined web, because, well, my sister's just gotten sixth grade this year, and I didn't have a very good experience with my web leaders in sixth grade, and I wanted her to have a better experience than I did, and I think it's working. Thank you.
Good evening. I became a web leader, because I like to make kids comfortable in an environment they are unsure with. I also like to be a general leader. When I was in sixth grade, my web leader helped me feel included and a part of something. I tried to act as a leader in there, too, so. And then, in web, it's a really amazing program. The students designed these shirts, like, the one I'm wearing right now. It helps the kids know, like, hey, I'm the person to talk to for any of your concerns at Walt Clark, like, lockers, and everything, like, finding a classroom. It helps people, like, just know that you're a leader, and on the back, it says that, like, I am a leader, not a follower. Unless it's a dark place, then you're going first. It adds a humorous look to the web shirts, and the students can, oh, God. They can put in their designs, and hopefully, they get voted for, and that's how we got this. I think Michaela Craig, she created this one this year, and it looks really stylish. Thank you for your time.
So, as you can see, I'm a very strong proponent of the web program, and those transition days that we have for fifth and sixth, and, you know, the freshmen, or the eighth grade going up to the high school. I worked as the web coordinator when I was in the classroom, teaching sixth grade and stuff like that. I really believe in empowering these awesome kids to be leaders, and to, you know, make our culture at Walt Clark inclusive and supportive of all of our students, and when we have new students come in, they take tours, we always grab a web leader, and, you know, it doesn't matter what grade level, it's just, you can see the pride they have for our school and the work that they do, so. I know we have web across the district, I'm just really proud of our program, because of the dedication and how it goes all year. It doesn't just stop on that first transition day, so I want to thank them for coming and being brave to stand in front of you. And I think they have one more little testimonial of students, I don't know if she was going to try to get.
So, the audio on these is not working, but I'm going to try, I've got it also synced up on my phone, try to have the audio go on my phone while the video is playing, we're going to see how that goes. Do our best to sync up here.
Hi, I'm Noah Kreitzer, a sixth grader, and I enjoyed my web leaders, because they helped me find my way around the school, and they're a familiar place that are always willing to help.
Okay. Yeah. And you're more than welcome to look at these on your own. And then, I don't think.
My name's Jane, and I'm a sixth grader here at Walt Clark. Without the web leader program, I don't think I would have been as organized I am this year, because before the school year started, I was very confused on all my classes, and especially the evens and odds. So, my web leaders helped me figure that out.
And we'll show one more for tonight.
Hi, my name is Mia, and the web leader program helped me by, on Orientation Day, helped me by putting me in groups with people I didn't know, and then get to know them, and show me around, and then showed me how stuff works.
So, that's just a handful of the sixth graders, and they all love their web leaders, so thank you again for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. It's a great program. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you students are welcome to stay, but you're certainly free to go. Don't feel like you need to stay if you have homework waiting at home. You bet. Alright, Wendy, you said there is no public comment, correct? Okay. Takes us to item five, action consent items, we will take these up together unless anybody wants to pull anything off. Anything? Okay, so I will read this, and then I will have Barb read, there's no gifts, is that correct? Then I will have Barb will read the proclamation as well, so. First of all, we have item five point one is approval of personnel extra duty coaching recommendations. Item five point two, approval of purchases over fifty thousand. And item five point three, approval of family and school partnership and education month proclamation. So Barb Cruz will go ahead and read the proclamation.
It's the State of Colorado proclamation. Whereas Colorado continues to experience an unacceptably, unacceptably high dropout rate, inequalities in the academic, academic achievement levels of students from different racial and socioeconomic groups, and low rates of enrollment and persistence in post-secondary education. And whereas, in order to address these issues, the state must look for new strategies for improving public education. And whereas, studies show that when parents, families, and schools collaborate effectively, students achieve higher levels of academic performance, demonstrate better attendance, and homework completion, and are less likely to drop out of school. And whereas, students from all cultural backgrounds tend to perform better academically when their parents, families, and the professionals at their schools bridge the gap between the culture at home and the classroom. And whereas, students benefit from active involvement by well-informed and engaged parents and families in their life and education. And whereas, Colorado desires to increase graduation rates, academic achievement levels of all students, and raise rates of enrollment and persistence in secondary and post-secondary education. Therefore, I, Jared Polis, Governor of the State of Colorado, do hereby proclaim October two thousand and nineteen as Family and School Partnership and Education Month. And she has signed with a seal.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the action consent items.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the action consent items five point one through five point three, are there any questions or further comment? No? Wendy, if you would call the roll, please.
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visda Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Aye.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swanty.
Aye.
Thank you, and that passes unanimously. Alright. Discussion items, item six point one, Sierra School Update, is that Don Huckabee?
Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Schaefer, Don Huckabee, Chief Academic Officer. And tonight, we have a short presentation for you about the Sierra School. You'll recall that in February of this year, that the Board approved that the Sierra School program would be provided to students here in Thompson School District through Catapult Learning, and this program is, has brought some of our students who were previously placed out of district for their needs to be served here within our district. And so I would invite our Executive Director of Student Support Services, Charlie Carter, and Kristi Briles, one of our Student Support Services Coordinator, to come up and share kind of where we are with the program.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, and Dr. Schaefer. We're excited to be here. Always want to be cognizant that the work that we're doing is supportive of our strategic plan, and so this, the work of the Sierra School really focuses on student achievement.
Sorry. It's not me doing it.
And an inclusive and supportive culture.
Charlie, can I interrupt for a second and have you talk more into the microphone? Our ears are not great up here, so.
What'd you say?
Alright.
Okay, and just a quick review for people who aren't familiar with the Sierra School. This is a separate school setting, a special education program that serves middle school and high school students to address social, emotional, behavioral, and mental health needs. And there were many benefits for us bringing some of our students back into the district to attend the Sierra School in district. And most importantly, I think, is the inclusion of students in their community and the ability to help their peers. By bringing them back, we've created the opportunity for them to participate in extracurricular activities, they have a short-term time at the school, which leads to a decrease in transportation costs. And at the school, they use a proven instructional delivery model, and there is a smaller staff to student ratio. One of the challenges that we have, that I'm sure you're aware of, is that we have difficulty hiring, filling positions in special education, both teachers and related service providers. And so the Sierra School brings their trained staff to our schools, and so we did not have to search for staff to fill these positions. And they include a program director, two special education teachers for teaching assistants, and a social worker.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Schaefer, thanks for the invite. So, last spring, we started with Student Support Services, we collaborated with the family and community members, facilities, safety, security, including SROs, IT, nutritional services, lots of interaction with transportation, and then Catapult Learning to set everything up. We also communicated with each family about the project and the transition process, I started that in the summer, I would reach out. We also worked with Walt Clark Middle School staff, and we did question and answers sessions, gave the opportunity for staff to ask the questions, and for us to respond. We also reviewed all the IEPs to make sure that we were implementing FAP with fidelity. We had ongoing communication, we said that, oh, did an open house for incoming students and families. And I continue to provide additional support for the Sierra School staff on a weekly basis to ensure that the transition is smooth, and we have students coming in and out of the district that are new. Current status, we have seven middle school students and six high school students, the capacity is twenty. So we are working on a process with Business Services and Charlie to fill those available slots in a timely manner, yet allow for everyone to settle in. Transportation at that point would not be provided by Thompson School District, it would be provided by the district bringing them in. So you think about it, that's thirteen students that would be placed out of district at this, today. Academics, students have access to grade-level curriculum and research-based interventions. We're working with our Curriculum Department here in district to make sure that if a student were to be going back, transitioned back into the general ed classroom, they would be aware of the same curriculum that they would be using as they transitioned back. Students have the opportunity to meet our graduation requirements, I actually ordered a cap and gown today for a Mountain View High School student that will graduate in May. Let's see. Social, emotional piece, the staff provides it, it's embedded throughout the day, and there's daily communication, because of the social worker and the small staff to student ratio. We work with, you know, any meeting is large, right? We have different providers coming in, guarding middle items, everyone's welcome, and we keep everyone in the loop. Students are given opportunities to practice their skills across the settings, so they have positive behavioral intervention, they do point sheets that they, they work on every day. It is the same expected curriculum every day, they know what they're walking into, they know what's expected. They do go on field trips, went to the bowling alley, went to the ice cream shop, as part of meeting their goals, that behavioral goal.
If you would like more information about the Sierra School at Thompson, you can use this website. This is maintained by Catapult Learning. So, to wrap things up, I just wanted to mention the big picture of things. Over the last ten years or so in Colorado, the number of out-of-district facility school placements have dwindled for a variety of reasons, mostly because of funding sources going away. Facility schools are regulated by the Department of Education. Students are placed there from a variety of different agencies, not just school districts. I think that annually, there's about six thousand students who are placed. I mean, they come and go, and they may be in multiple placements. And approximately eighty school districts have students placed in facility schools. And the reason why I bring this up is because with the decreased availability of these out-of-district placements, I think that we're being proactive as a, opportunity. Not rely. Do you have any questions?
Board, questions? Mark?
So, when, just wanted to make sure, clarification on a couple of points. On average, there are approximately six thousand placements made in facility schools, is that across the state or the nation?
That's across the state of Colorado. But again, it can be multiple placements for one student, so they might, they might be placed in six different placements in one school.
Okay, similarly, when we're talking about approximately eighty school districts, that's also across the state of Colorado?
Correct.
Okay. And then I wanted to make sure that I understand, we currently have one facility for the Sierra School, and that's housed at Walt Clark Middle School? Okay. And then, you answered that question. Could you briefly describe how a student is qualified or becomes eligible for attending the Sierra School?
First, they would have to have been found eligible to receive special education services, meeting certain eligibility criteria established by federal and state special education law. And then the IEP team makes placement decisions based on the unique needs of that student. And so I've talked before about that continuum of services, where you may have a student who needs just a little bit of support, and you have students who need a greater level of support, so that increasing support. The Sierra School would be considered a high-support school, and so the IEP team, including the parents, would make a decision based on all the information, body of evidence that they have available to them, about what the best placement is, so that the student will be able to make progress, both academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. And so that's how a decision would be made, that a student would require those services as opposed to something else. Did that answer your question?
That was great, yeah, thank you.
Barb, and then Paul, whichever.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, we have thirteen that came back, so do we still have some students that are going elsewhere because of their needs?
Yes, yes, we still have students, because that program serves the middle and high school.
Right.
We do have some students that would need that level at the elementary.
Okay.
And so they're placed out of district, and then there's other students that require, that have different needs.
Different level of.
You got it.
Okay.
And so they're also placed.
Alright. And then, go ahead.
We also have students in district who may be in queue to attend, well, because, you know, we're always meeting and working towards finding the appropriate placement, so we may have some students who will be joining them.
And so, how much interaction, do they have opportunities to interact with the other students at the school, or they kept pretty much in their own environment?
It is a separate school setting.
Okay.
But Walt Clark Middle School has been awesome as far as.
Okay, I figured they probably would be.
They have been giving us the opportunity to use the lunchroom, and we utilize the gym outside. What else? Am I missing anything?
And of course, as always, the idea is, is that we want students to be included to the greatest extent possible, and so they're. And so their goals are to be able to develop those skills necessary to self-regulate and to be able to access those other settings as well.
Still early in the year. We have both, right?
Of course, yeah.
I don't think I'm gonna piggyback off these two, because you started answering my questions. So when they enter these programs, the high support, is it the expectation that they will be transitioning off, and they could leave the program any time of the year? Or are these like, high-high support that they're probably gonna be there all year? I mean, so we have 13 now, but next month, we could have, someone could transition out? Or how's all that?
Yes, of course. I mean, we always look at if they're meeting their goals. Are they regulated throughout the day? Can they access maybe one class, you know, at a typical high school or middle school? So it's a constant. We're constantly assessing on their goals. So some kids do move in and out. At the beginning, though, you definitely wanna, right? Like, make them, everyone comfortable, make sure everything is going as planned, and then... So nothing, we don't make anything quick, and we follow their goals. I didn't explain that very well.
We also try, so there's, we rely on data collection as well to support our instructional decision-making. And so when we're talking about whether or not students achieve their goals, the goals are really built in order to help them to become more independent and to develop those skills. And so I think what Kristi was trying to say is, is we don't make those decisions rashly. We make a lot of data-driven decisions that include the parents and also the students as well.
I guess a couple of things I'm thinking about. So to the extent that they start doing some mainstreaming in their classrooms, so are there implications for teachers outside this program needing to get training, and they're getting training? Or how do we make sure that piece works well?
So if a student from Sierra School were going to attend a class at a typical high school, we would send them with support from Sierra School at that point, to make sure that they can stay regulated and everything, everyone's safe. So we wouldn't just send them alone. Or expect the staff at the home high school or home middle school to provide that.
And so to, I think what you were getting at is, is are we creating capacity in the general education staff to be able to work with the students with an understanding of what their needs are?
Yeah, so even the teachers, the most well-intentioned teachers, or anything else, they bring those students in, even with an aid or support there, and it just wasn't always a successful situation.
And so part of that transition, where somebody goes with a student, is to support the student, but it's also to support the staff in the receiving classroom. And then broadly, our department is doing a lot of different types of trainings and work in the school, starting with IEP team, also sizing out, to provide them with the skills necessary to work with kids who have this type of profile.
I'll take my last one real quick.
Go ahead.
I support this program regardless of where the financing, but do we, did we come out with kind of what the break-even point was? That, you know, if we have 13 kids, we're, it's kind of a self-sustaining program, or do we know?
And anybody down here?
You guys coming in?
No? Mark, did you have another one?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
One more question. We covered this a year ago, but it's been a year. And so do we expect, looking at the elementary school and their needs, do we expect the demand for this program to grow? My expectation is yes, but does it grow proportionally? Are we seeing it grow proportionally with the growth of our community as a whole, or is it a disproportionate growth?
I've had several students that have moved into the district over the summer and in the very beginning of school that needed that level of service. So I'm already seeing the need.
So I would say that there, that the demand for this type of service will either be consistent or growing.
Okay. That helps for planning.
Thank you. That was an excellent presentation. Thank you. We really appreciate hearing back about that program. All right, thanks. Next up is 6.2. Gordon, you have a CMAC. I'm gonna think of what that's called. Mil, Citizens Mil Accountability Advisory?
Audit Committee.
Say it again?
Citizens Mil Levy Override Audit Committee.
Good grief, okay. You and your acronyms. So we had a, Gordon will tell us, but we had a member tender their resignation on this committee, and Dr. Banks and I met prior to this meeting to pick out another.
Appointed, an appointed member.
Appointed member, correct.
So this was not, thank you, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the district. This resignation was from an appointed position, not from an at-large position. Therefore, the meeting of the committee to, from the board, to select this individual. The person that was selected to fill this vacancy is Frank Torres. I have not reached out to him, but I will do that tomorrow to confirm his interest in joining this committee.
And so if we, we approve at this point, correct? Okay. Yeah. So if I could have a motion to approve that appointment in a second, and then we can take a vote on that.
So moved.
Second. Okay, great. We have a motion in a second to appoint Frank Torres to the CMAC committee. Any further questions? Wendy, if you'd call the roll, please.
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visder Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Aye.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swante.
Aye.
Thank you. And that appointment is approved. And I just lost my, here we go. Okay, so Gordon, it looks like you're up next for item 6.3, Estimated Assessed Valuation Affecting the 2020 Mil Levy Rate. Correct?
That's correct. Thank you. Yes, thank you, Madam President. The presentation here is intended to be just a brief update or reminder, I guess, as much as anything for the board and the community at large for the process of setting assessed valuations and how those assessed valuations affect the mil levy rate for education-related expenditure, not expenditures, but mil levy rate assessments that are assessed to property owners within the school district boundaries. To begin, what is assessed valuation? That is an annual calculation that's performed by the county assessors. We'll get to, coming up in the presentation, what those counties are and what percentage of our assessed valuation we have. But it's three counties, primarily Laramo County, and then a portion of Weld County, and a smaller portion of Boulder County. It's assessments that the assessor or values that the assessors in each one of those counties assigns to property, both real property or both residential property and non-residential property. The revaluation process that the counties go through, the county assessors, is a two-year, every two years. So it's assessed in an odd-numbered year and collected in the following even-numbered year. So obviously, in 2019, as we head to the end of the calendar year, those assessments have been sent out already by all the county assessors to the individual property owners, and those taxes will then be assessed and collected in the 2020 year, which for the school district is the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Changes in the non-EV assessment years are primarily related to new construction. So in those off-numbered years or non-revaluation years, it's primarily just new construction that goes into the calculations. In the assessment years, it's new construction plus revaluation of the property given market conditions.
Well, just a quick question. When it's evaluated in an odd year, isn't it then that assessment the succeeding even year and the succeeding odd year after that, for two years?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Typically, there's very little change from the, once the assessment year is put in place, to the next year, it's, unless there is a drastic change in the economics in a county, but it is typically a two-year assessment, that rates don't change for that two-year period. That's correct. And as a general rule. And then the assessed valuation that we have as a district that's communicated to us is what's used to help set the, or it is used to set the mil levy rate for education-related property taxes. The types of real property that are included in assessed valuation is really everything that's out there, any kind of property except a few exempted properties. So from a residential standpoint, single-family homes, townhomes, condos, apartment complexes, all of those are assessed at a 7.15% assessment rate, which is set by the, is determined by the Gallagher Amendment. As property values change, that rate changes a little bit. Non-residential property, you can see the list there, commercial, industrial, vacant land, all the other items there. All of those non-residential properties are assessed at a 29% assessment rate. If you look within the TSD boundaries, approximately 59% of the assessed valuation is residential and 41% is non-residential. That's a bit different than what the targets of Gallagher were initially, with 45% residential and 55% non-residential was the original target when Gallagher was enacted in 1982, I believe.
Gordon, could you give us those percentages again, real quick?
For Gallagher, 45% residential, 55% non-residential are the target rates for, from a Gallagher perspective. Keep in mind, those are statewide rates. It's not a localized rate, so, or an allocation between the two, between residential and non-residential. It's looked at from a state level, so there could be two counties in northern Colorado, let's say, with Laramo County that's in, Laramo or Weld County that are experiencing rapid growth, increases in assessed valuation, especially in the residential side, but also in the non-residential side. That percentage allocation within that county or within that particular school district could be much different than it is on a county in southeast Colorado, for example. There could be a vast difference in the types of properties and the valuation, or the percentage makeup of those properties within each one of the counties and with each one of the school districts. So the 2020 preliminary distribution of assessed valuation by county, let me just explain the process a bit. Each August, the county assessors for each one of the three counties that reside within the school district boundaries send an estimate of what they think the assessed valuation is going to be. In November, they send the final actual valuation, which is then used to calculate what the mil levy rates should be set at. Those mil levy rates are then brought to the board for certification or adoption of those mil levy rates that are then communicated back to the county treasurers, which put the, that tax rate on the tax statements for each individual property owner. And then those taxes are collected and remitted to the school district. So you can see certainly 90, almost 96% of the assessed valuation within the district boundaries resides in Laramo County, with a little short of 4% being in Weld County and Boulder County being just a small portion, 0.2%. Keep in mind that these are both residential and non-residential properties that we looked at on a previous slide. What are the types of mil levies or taxes that are assessed or collected by the counties and then remitted to Thompson School District? These are the, really, the four main areas. The School Finance Act, or SFA as it's referred to by the Colorado Department of Education, is set. That's a locked rate that the state indicates to each district what they should assess from a School Finance Act perspective. Our amount in Thompson is different than neighbors to the north, neighbors to the south. Any district could have a different number here, with the maximum amount being 27 mils. But for Thompson School District, that's 22.36 mils is that particular measurement. So that's the largest portion of the local assessments that are made from a property tax perspective, is what we are directed to do by the state of Colorado. The next largest percentage of the taxes that are assessed, the mil levy rates, is from the voter-approved mil levy overrides, or the MLOs. There are three in existence, one from 1999, one in 2006, and the most recent in 2018. That accounts for 30.6% of the tax mil levy rate within the district. Voter-approved bonded debt, there's two outstanding debts out there, bond issuances that are being repaid, and those account for 18.1% of the total taxation. And abatements is a very small amount, 0.3%. The abatements are taxes that are disputed in a prior year and collected in a subsequent year. So if somebody's disputing their property valuation, or somebody defaults on their property taxes, there could be collections in a subsequent year. That's what those abatements represent.
Is that abatement number pretty typical?
It's very small typically, especially in these economic times. Back in 2008, 2009, with the burst of the real estate bubble and people walking away from their mortgages, that number was higher. There were higher collections from abatements or higher defaults on property taxes that were being remitted to the counties. But still, even at that point, it might have made up 1% to 2% of the total district's assessment rate.
I just want to discuss this, if you don't mind, for a second. So the public doesn't get the wrong impression. This is the percentages of the property assessment, that the state supplements the funding per pupil from a different source of money in addition to this source of money. And therefore, it's not, I don't want the public to think that 30% of our operating budget comes from mil levy overrides.
No, absolutely not. There is a equalization portion that the state sets a dollar amount of funding that each district is entitled to. Then districts, whatever they collect locally, is subtracted from that number, and the remaining amount is supplied by the state. I will say, you're exactly right, from different funding sources, not from property taxes, but from state income tax, state sales tax, out of the state's general fund budget. That's correct. The mil levy overrides that are collected in the district at 30.6% is only of the locally assessed taxes and the subsequent revenue that's collected, not of the total operating budget. That's exactly right.
And in a rough photo of magnitude, the local share of the total funding per pupil is about 30%, 35%?
A little higher than that, pushing 40%, but 38%, something like that.
And the rest comes from the state.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Preliminary changes in assessed valuation, just some comments about this. Again, keep in mind that the preliminary estimates come out in August and then are finalized by the treasurers and communicated to the school district in November. The numbers that have been put together so far are based on these estimates, but there is the possibility that those could change, especially given the large percentage of assessed valuation in the school district boundaries that's associated with Laramo County. There were a large number, a record number, of protests of valuation of homes and businesses, any kind of property, really. I think the county with the most in the state was Laramo County of protests. So the county continues to work through those. If they honor some of those protests and lower the assessed valuations of the properties, it could affect these numbers. So again, the numbers that have been used as of August are preliminary and will be finalized in November. And talking about the process again, the board will then, after the final numbers are received in November, calculations made, the calculated mil levy rates will then be brought to the board for certification in December of 2019. The estimated increase as of the August numbers is substantial for the district, 29.3% increase. Keep in mind that that is all properties. In the final November numbers that come out, they break it down very specifically by each of those types of properties. Residential properties have not gone up 30% overall, 29.3%. There's a variety of different factors that go into that, the area, the neighborhood where the property is located, comparable solds in that neighborhood, a variety of different things that could affect that. But the overall property for a residential standpoint is probably, and again, it's very specific to the property, but the range I've seen thus far is from 16%. specific to the property, but the range I've seen thus far is from 16% to 20% with, so that, that would obviously say that the non-residential properties then increased at a higher percentage for their assessed valuation to push the overall average to 29.3%. What that relates to or what that does for the taxes for the district or the mill levy rate especially is it decreases the mill levy rate because there's a specific dollar amount that the district is required to collect. First, from the 22.36 mills that the, the state says we have to assess. The bonded debt fluctuates for our debt service each year, so that number fluctuates a little bit. Two of the three mill levy overrides that are in place are fixed mills, both fixed mill and fixed dollar. So no matter how much more assessed valuation goes up, more revenue can't be collected on two of the three mill levies overrides that are out there. So in trying to recall my, my math terms, essentially, the assessed valuation is the denominator in the equation. The numerator stays essentially flat. It changes a little bit, but as assessed valuation grows, the denominator grows. That's the factor then that causes the tax rate to decrease. A property may be worth more and have the assessment on a higher overall value, but the tax rate that's being charged or the mill levy rate actually decreases by about 8%, almost 8% for the district, based on the growth of the assessed valuation on preliminary numbers.
A minute or two for questions? Mark?
About how much of the estimated increase was due to the addition of new properties?
Those are details that will be on the November, the final numbers. We don't have a good count. They don't detail by property type or by new construction necessarily on the August preliminary. Those are numbers that'll be firmed up and on the November estimates, or, I'm sorry, the November final numbers that the assessors send.
We gotta wait for a month, is what you're saying?
Yes, please. It's a, it, there was something that I looked at. It wasn't a, the, the increase that we see at 29.3%, I will say anecdotally from past history, will be a combination of new construction that's added to the property tax rules as well as increase in value of existing property.
Anybody else? All right, will you be back then in November after that to, yes, you will, because we have to take action on it in December?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, Gordon.
Thank you.
All right, next up are a few policy changes, 6.4. How many of these are you handling, Matt?
The next three.
Okay, so item 6.4 is Policy EHB, records retention. And then we will look at Policy EGAAR, which is staff use of electronic mail, and Policy JS, which is the student acceptable use policy. Matt?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I'm Chief Technology Officer Matt Kuhn, and we have a few policies we need to revise. The first one is the records retention policy. The reason we're revising this one is it really goes hand-in-hand with the next one, the staff use of electronic mail. In records retention, it refers to the state's manual, but when you read the state's manual, they refer back to the district for the policy about electronic mail. And so that didn't help much when we were trying to actually figure out how long electronic mail should be retained and how that should be handled. So we needed to codify that, really about the electronic mail, email. And the email policy, the next one, that's the regulation, that one was not updated since 2011. So that one was before we used Gmail and under very different systems. So it had stuff in it that was about those old systems, not about our new systems. So they're being updated so that they match what we do in Gmail and so that the manual, when it refers back to the district, actually has something to refer back to that is modern and, and matches. So you can see in the red lines there what we changed with the records retention. Really, we're talking about how long do we keep email and cloud-based accounts? And it's broken into two pieces, staff and students, but they're the same length, which is one year. They are handled slightly differently because, for example, if you're a senior in high school, you have a stipulation where we will actually reactivate your account if need be because some of them are applying to colleges or what have you, and sometimes they need to get back into their portfolios to get some information out. Other student accounts, we just keep plainly for a year, just in case they come back to the district. But it does take up space and it does slow down systems if you, if you keep them for too long. So we do need to eventually flush them out of the system. Any questions about the first two, the first policy and its regulation about email?
I'm gonna show my, I'm gonna show my, how does this interact with like the Open Records Act? And if someone comes a couple of years later and...
That's a good question. I matched these with other districts, so I asked around other districts because I was concerned about that particular question. And the answer I got from many of my colleagues was that, and, and it's the same experience that we have here, is that when you get a COR request, if you have an extremely long archive, like let's say perpetual, then you really have a hard time actually figuring out if you've even gotten all the information because who knows how long perpetual actually goes back for certain people? So you do need to set some kind of date so that you know, okay, I've looked far enough back. You know, there wouldn't be anything farther than this. Also, there's nothing in the law that says that we have to keep it any certain amount of time. It just says if we have it, we have to turn it over. So that's how it affects COR.
Does that make sense? Any other questions on these before we go on to the third one?
Okay. Third one is very different, doesn't have anything to do with the other two.
Except for use.
The third one is the Student Acceptable Technology Use Policy in Agreement. Some of, many of you probably remember, only a couple of years ago, I brought this one forward. But it has been a bit confusing for parents recently because this one is inside the re-registration system in Infinite Campus, so they have to sign off on this policy, much like the other ones like, you know, permissions to have photos taken and things like that. So when they look at this policy, it's confusing because it is referring to fees that we, we aren't actually currently collecting. So all I did was take the fees language out of the policy. I didn't say we do or don't collect them, I just didn't mention them. I just took them out as like a neutral in the policy so that it doesn't confuse anyone thinking that they do have a fee or don't have a fee, depending on what school they might be at. And then there was a few other areas, as we looked at the policy, that did need a little bit of updating that you see in red, just kind of areas we may have missed the first time when we updated it a few, a couple of years ago. There is also something else here. You'll notice that there's an agreement inside it. That's also to alleviate some confusion because years back, we used to have the policy and the agreement as like a separate regulation, but that really confused parents because they were signing an agreement about the policy. So they would have to find two different documents to really figure out what they were signing to. So instead, we just put them all together so that you can see what you're actually signing to in the same document. Any other questions about this one?
Matt, can you talk a little bit about, so, parents and students will see this yearly, right? So we're gonna ask them to re-up. Can you talk a little bit about where that lives and what that looks at?
Yes, they, they currently do see this yearly and they have for the last two years since we last updated it. So every year, when you re-register for school, you have to sign off on this as a student and a parent. And if you're a parent, you're saying basically that you have spoken to your, your child about this policy. It's not a sign-off of agreements, it's, it's really a sign-off of understanding. So students can't say, well, you know, I just don't agree, I won't, I won't behave on computers. We're not asking them if they agree, we're asking if they, they know the rule. And they sign by saying, I understand, I know what this says.
I wanted to comment, the district is so lucky to have you, Dr. Kuhn. You're doing great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Real quick, what I'm curious, do we like cover insurance for like damage, theft, loss? Are we just like budget money and hold on aside to cover things like that?
Well, that's not, that's not codified in the policy, but we do have insurance, insurance programs that we have negotiated with insurance vendors. It depends on the model of UTA, and it's pretty much UTA schools that have this. So for example, at Mountain View, they have bought insurance because they do allow the students to take home their devices. So they do insure for accidental damage. We also have warranties, of course, which we will utilize before we would utilize insurance. Other models of UTA are not as expensive and not as prone to loss, theft, and damage. So the insurance becomes more expensive than just self-insuring yourself against the minor damage that you would get in other types of models where they don't go home.
Do we have a budget line item for?
We do.
For that kind of thing?
Yes.
They don't get, you know, they get stolen or they get whatever.
Gordon has been working on that, and he'll be releasing that soon to the UTA schools.
Okay. And so it's by, it's by school then?
By UTA school.
Okay.
Yeah, if you're a UTA school, you'll get a supplemental budget item.
Okay, for that.
And will cover those repair, maintenance, and loss costs.
Interestingly, we were just talking about this at the Lovin High School SAC meeting last night because we were learning about all of the influx of the new...
Debating the models over there, haven't you?
Correct, correct. Their, parents had a lot to say about it. It was interesting conversation. But that was one of the things that parents were concerned about, you know, it's like, is the school gonna get, you know, they were concerned about their school, you know, is the school gonna get dinged if kids don't return or lose them?
And that's for accidental damage. You know, if there's neglectful or malicious, then the student is still fined for that cost.
Obviously. Any other questions? All right. I'm having all kinds of technical difficulties up here tonight.
Maybe you asked me to take back my compliment of Dr. Kuhn?
No, it's not him, it's me. I, I have an update on my phone and I can't find my timer and, okay. Item 6.7, Policies FF and FFR Regulation, Naming District Sites and Facilities. That looks like Todd Piccone up there.
Yes, good evening, good evening, Madam President, Board of Education, and Dr. Schaefer. Todd Piccone, Chief Operations Officer. Tonight, want to provide the Board of Education an update and move forward with approval of revisions to Board Policy FF and FFR. These changes are to help define guidelines and process for naming new facilities. The proposed has been reviewed by legal counsel. So if we look at FF, along with cleaning up some consistent language within the policy, the real meat of the change comes in the first paragraph, where you'll see that facilities shall be named for locality or community in which they are located, animals, or significant or pertinent events. As we're going forward, talking about naming the new PK8, there were some questions about what the policy was guiding us towards. And so we took this, worked with legal staff, and really became, became, cleaned up the process for what the committee has to do, and then really provided some guidance for what they can name the building after. So that was really the meat of the change in the first paragraph. You'll notice that part of the other change was really to show the committee they had to come to a consensus on the name. It wasn't just throwing names out, but they actually had to work through the process of the naming and then come to a point to where they could agree on what the name was. And finally, it talks about really the approval process that the Board of Education will undertake for the new facility and/or facility modification. So along with that, I'll just touch on FFR and then see if there are any questions. FFR really helped define what is a new building compared to a process for renaming an existing facility that already has a name. So as we looked through FF, it was really in FFR that we had to define clearly how the process was and what we needed to do if that was the case. So that's really the meat of the change in the two policies. Is there any questions?
Just a technical question. I'm struggling up here tonight. FF is, they're, they're named a little bit differently in the, in the agenda versus the, on the policy. So FF is the one that says naming district sites and facilities, correct?
Correct.
And it's got the several paragraphs that starts with each district site with separate geographic location, et cetera.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so that's FF. And then the regulation is FFR, which, naming district sites and facilities, and it says the following procedures shall be followed.
Correct, yes.
So there's those two.
There's those two.
Okay. They're, they're named right on the policy, but the reference in the memo was confusing.
Oh, okay.
So I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right thing. Questions, board? Jeff?
I'll make sure I understand this right. This is all based on Board policy and we can change this as a board? I guess my big question isn't, has been for many years, why we name schools after geographical locations when we have so many deserving people historically here in the community where we have a real opportunity to name a school after them and send a message to children about history and their community? It'd be interesting to know how many schools are named Ponderosa or Mountain View or any of the names that we just tend to use over and over. And I won't be here long enough to impact this change, but I would encourage this board to consider changing this policy where you can name it after somebody who's been very influential in education.
And I will note too, on, towards the bottom of Policy FF, there is still that provision that in selecting names, special consideration will be given to those names, that will have a special meaning to students and citizens, and will enhance the education and climate of the new school. So it wasn't taken out, it was just adding other possibilities to that.
Well, I love the fact that we've named some of our schools after people that have been here historically over the years, and I just think it's a great idea to name it after people versus just another ponderosa tree.
Dr. Schaefer?
As we pursue the naming of new schools, certainly will be an inclusive process, so we'll be open to the entire community where any member of the community can forward suggestions and ideas. We then have, by Board Policy, a committee that, that comes together and goes through the names. The committee is made up of students and parents and district officials as well as community members. Ultimately, recommendations are made to the school board. So it's ultimately the school board's decision to act on the recommendation of the, of the committee.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, this, these, this policy as well as the tech policies will come back for approval next month? Next meeting, excuse me. Next meeting. Okay. Thank you. Bond update, 6.8, Tammy and Company.
Okay, so exciting for tonight is a year ago, we were standing here with hopes of a bond. With the passage of the bond, we now have a report tonight by two architectural firms that own the PK8 and CT Center. And this is really an exciting time because this is really setting this, you know, as Dr. Schaefer mentioned last night, it's groundbreaking. This is pretty monumental, these two projects. You have to compliment the teams, in the last six, really eight months, it's been very aggressive and a, a process is very inclusive, which then can create a longer process, but we have captured everyone's ideas, hopes, and we hopes most of their dreams. But I'll invite Tammy to come up, she can go over that a little more, and then the two architect firms.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Madam President, Board of Education, and Dr. Schaefer, for the chance to come in front of you and show you the projects and actually let the teams that are behind the brilliance behind the, what you see in the elevations and the drawings so far in front of you two, instead of just hearing my update. We will return to the normal financial update and the detailed update at my next update. So with that, we also have a guest, Maria, if you'd like to come forward. She's been a part of our DAG committee and would like to just say a few words just on the overall process.
Madam President, Board, and Dr. Schaefer, thanks for giving me this opportunity to share my testimony. I've been in the district for three years, I've been at four schools, I'm a specialist. And being part of this committee has completely transformed my perception of this district as a professional, caring district for the needs of kids. This process and this company Tammy and Rick have led have been so rewarding, knowing that everybody has, every stakeholder has had a voice and has been heard, that we've had this iterative, iterative process that has truly been textbook because there, the time has been given to do it over and over and go through the details and be thorough and fair and transparent. Gives me great peace and hope for conditions that are contemporary and that allow for us to do our very best teaching and for kids to do their very best learning. So thank you for your support.
Thanks, Maria. So like I said, I will turn it over. We were hoping for 20 minutes, I see 15. We were hoping for 20 minutes, I see 15 is in the agenda, so you guys are on task.
You can use some, Matt left some time on the table, so you're good.
Okay, good. We'll keep it, we'll keep it brief. A lot of the information you guys have seen, but it's nice to be able to go over it again and hear from the designers' perspective. So I will turn it over to Josh, he's with World Architecture for the new pre-K8.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board and Dr. Schaefer. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Josh Grineer, presenting an update on the pre-K8 project. We've heard that, as you've just heard there, that really listening broadly to your stakeholders is critical in this process. So as we go through this presentation, I'll try to refer to the things that we've heard are important and how they have shaped the design and layout of the building. How do I click?
It's the theme of the night. Notice the technology work.
So in the layout of the site, I think one of the, one of the main things that we've heard is about really creating a safe layout that separates vehicle traffic from the student areas. So you've got, in this design, you have all of the traffic of vehicles taking place on the north and the east and then all of the areas for outdoor learning and play and exercise of students to be located on the west and on the south. The main entrance is on the east. And within that idea of creating safety through separation, buses, parents and staff, all of those vehicles have been separated as well with their own dedicated places to access the site and for parking as well. So I can't really point, but I think you can, I can point. There's the main entrance. There's a queuing line that's designed to get any kind of a stacking lane of cars as much as possible off of that main street to the north. And then buses are here on the south and event and staff parking to the, to the east. We also heard that outdoor learning and gardens and all of that is critical. We've heard that all the way through, that there's a desire to be outside and to have connections with nature. So there is a large student courtyard that has opportunities for all of those things to take place. And we've really partnered with Rick, I don't know if Rick is still here, but he's been a great collaborator as well in this whole effort to help define that. In terms of the layout of the building itself, we've heard that within this, with this school, pre-K through 8, there is a desire to create a sense of a single community, a single school community, and yet find ways to create some separation of grade levels and to create a sense as students progress through this building that they have a sense of places that they are going in the future. They can see them, they're not that yet there and that when they are older, they can look back on places that they have been and they have that sense of a journey and progression. So to create that central space, the building is designed around a heart. The cafeteria is the heart of that. And you walk in and you're immediately in that heart. You can see directly through the building to the outdoor learning beyond and then to the west. And then your learning environments that are quieter and more like classroom spaces are to the north in that, that bar that's been designed to allow a lot of light into it. That's one of the reasons why it's longer and thinner. More active spaces are on the south, music, gyms, et cetera. And then there's a dedicated area that's a little bit more removed for pre-K and K off to the southeast with its own entrance. The media center is adjacent to that heart as well. And that's a two-story, kind of a tiered media center with the idea that it feels as it's one, but yet older students are above and you can create that, create that separation. So when you move upstairs, that is where the older students are. This is grades five, six, seven and eight. And they have their own, their own version of the heart that is tied back to that main central space with their own media center maker and flexible areas that are connected there. And then when you go into the learning environments themselves, we heard there was a desire to break down the scale of the building and to organize in clusters, smaller communities. So each, each grade level is gathered together around a shared flexible resource area. And the individual learning spaces around that are all connected to it and to each other through operable walls and glass doors, sliding doors, et cetera. We've heard that we want to, we want to support collaboration with flexible spaces. And you can see that there's similar kind of arrangements of these clusters for all the different grade levels. In terms of a color scheme, going back to that desire to connect with nature, we heard over and over again that natural materials and natural elements were going to be important. So the color palette has been developed in response to the local environment as well as the front range, emphasis on finding ways to bring wood and natural materials into the environment and colors that are of a similar feeling. So this is an example of the types of materials that will be included. This is a view of that heart. You're, you're standing with your back to a stage. This is a, designed to be a flexible area that can serve multiple purposes, both eating, obviously as a cafeteria, but it's a performance space, a gathering space. The idea is you can bring much of the school together in assemblies here. You have a view off to the left there of, the media center for the younger students is, is down low and then the older students are up above. There's a desire, we toured many different buildings, both virtually with the DAG and in person. And we saw a lot of these learning stairs and they decided that they wanted to do that as well. It serves as a great tool to help create that sense of a heart and a common, shared community. And that'll be a flexible space that can be learned for, that can be used for learning, for eating, for presenting. We're working on with the district, we think, we've heard also that we want to find one more way to kind of add a layer of creativity to this space. It's not fully done. We've talked a little bit about maybe we can find an opportunity to collaborate with, maybe even a local artist to come up with some, some way to, you know, maybe on the stairs to create some sort of graphic or image. But that's in the works. Here's a view of one of the lower grade level, shared flexible resource area. You're seeing a classroom to the left with its operable wall open. And then you see a door on the right that would connect each one of those shared areas has access to a patio that's dedicated to it as well. Again, reinforcing that connection to outdoors and nature. And then moving to the exterior, we heard really a strong desire to, to fit in with the neighborhood, to be warm and welcoming and yet stand out and, and be a focal point in that neighborhood. We've heard that we wanted it to feel fun, but you know, maybe not cartoony. So one of the elements that we've brought into this is a very, kind of a subtle, abstracted mountain range across the front facade there that references, hopefully not too heavy-handed, but references the mountain range that would be beyond, on the other side of the building. And then you can see that this would be that front main courtyard. We don't have the flagpole in there right now, but that's, there will definitely be a flagpole by the front. And then this is a view of the north, more on that busier side on that main street. And I think our direction here was really to, you know, we don't, we want to kind of buffer ourselves a little bit from that busier road, but yet still stay a little bit warm and soften that. So you're, you know, we're kind of presenting a buffer to that main circulation and yet inviting people around to the, to the more open courtyard on the- Questions?
Questions, Board? This looks a little different from last time, yeah?
Yeah.
The colored, the colors seem more color. Am I imagining that?
Well, we've, I don't know how much you all have seen, but you know-
Oh, that's right, because you went there.
Our first pass through-
Tammy was though, yeah.
Yeah, we, I think the feedback that we got, and we'll just be direct, is it felt a little cold. It felt a little too sophisticated, almost a little bit too techie, a little too modern. And the direction we got was, you know, warm it up, make it feel a little younger. Add, maybe add a little bit of color, but don't go too far. So I think, you know, we just didn't change a lot, just a few materials and try to lighten it up and make it a little more playful.
Great. Mark?
I'll weigh in, I'm noticing the difference from what we saw before and I like it. I think it's a really good direction, particularly because we're looking at pre-K through 8. I think it's very fitting.
Great.
Kind of curious, I don't know who would answer this, but kind of curious on fencing. Where do we put fencing or required to, are we trying to stay away from it? How do we handle fencing?
Take it or you want to take it, Tammy?
We can take what we've heard.
Yeah. I'll go back to the site plan. So we, basically, we don't want to present a harsh, a harsh, harsh fencing line to the public. But we know that on the south, that that's, that's, you know, that's private property, et cetera. So I think they'll probably be fencing along that south edge to define that. It's also where the fields are, that that's going to stop balls, et cetera. So the south will be, that will be a fence. On the east and the north, I think there'll probably something, be something ornamental along that corner right here. Because we're not going to want any pedestrians to try to cut through the, the traffic that's there. But I wouldn't ima, don't picture this as like a chain link kind of a fence. This would be something more to just, you don't want children to try to walk through the, the drop-off lane. And that fence will direct them to the sides where they can cross at a crosswalk. And then towards the, the west, you know, to the west of this is the, the Development's Community Center. And the direction we've heard is that it needs to be clear that there is a, it's a different property, but that it shouldn't be just totally barred off. So that, what I'm, what I have heard is that there will be a little bit of, of fencing, but it'll have gaps in it and you will be able to have some connection across that. Can I answer that? Did I miss anything?
Yeah, it does, I'm just thinking of all the things I dealt with as a principal. Yes, we want fences there, no, we don't want fences there. You know, kids wandering off the grounds versus stranger, I mean, all those things, I was-
A lot of it is traffic control and then of course, security. So there's those barriers, especially on the west side with the rec center for drive traffic. But then we definitely want to encourage the pedestrian and the access. We are sharing a drive coming in from the north, so there's that partnership there. So, and then the south side, of course, is security and safety against the ditch that runs along the south side. So we definitely want that. And then in that neighborhood, the north and east sides, you're still looking at the community feel and access and, and not so closed off and yet still be safe to avoid traffic going where it doesn't need to be or, or too quick of an access to students as they come and go.
We've gotten lots of perspectives on where it should, shouldn't go to, met with security staff, you know, on that.
Anybody else? All right, thanks, Josh. Looks great. I can't wait to see it.
3D will be better. Okay, so I will turn it over to Greg Cromer. He is our architect, the principal architect with DLR Group. And they are in charge of the CTE and Ferguson project.
Evening, Madam President, School Board and Dr. Schaefer. The images that, that we're going to see tonight are, I believe you saw maybe a couple weeks ago. Is it turned?
The way I did it was just spin the wheel.
Yeah. Oh, there we go. And first of all, we had a great groundbreaking and happy to see all the turnout for that. To start this overall presentation with, we'll go to a site plan, combination floor plan. We've heard strongly from beginning of this, it's the, obviously, the bringing together of two programs, a CTE program and the existing strength of Ferguson High. And in that process of design, we crafted this building that is in essence, an L-shaped building. And at the hub is the assembly space for both programs to utilize. As much as there are a desire to separate programs because of users, there's also a desire to integrate. So as you'll see, hopefully through the renderings, you'll see, see this continuity. But to take you back outside, it's always been about how students or users might arrive at this. So we do have, we still have maintained this two points of entry. One would be the Ferguson High at the lowest point here, next to the assembly and the CTE entrance just slightly to the north. As you can see, we've tried to maintain a lot of the existing site for the neighborhood, especially the playground area. And we have concentrated our development primarily to the west for parking and service demands of the programs of CTE. With the overall layout, we have one combined administration, that's in the light yellow. Again, the two entrances around that. The large, the mauve space or the dusty rose colored spaces to the north are the, the three programs for CTE with cybersecurity being the fourth program at the lower edge here. I won't go into the programs because I believe you all are pretty well-versed in those programs. What I'm really excited about is not only how this new piece sits next to the existing Van Buren Elementary School, but how the Van Buren Elementary School is actually refreshed. And I think that's a huge key about how the sequence of entry and the student experience regarding this school is really brought together. It's really concentrated about that existing library, if you ever walk through it. It's about taking that down and creating a collaboration project-based hub. And that is surrounded by the faculty, works, work areas as well as instructional classrooms. And we've done our best to kind of work within those existing spaces to create transparency. Additionally, is the linkage to the separate buildings, if you will, as you go to the east. We have the old gym, we have modified that gym to be the science classroom hub, if you will, with the art and the performing arts, if you will, the music program. So that higher volume, those larger spaces really set up a great combination. And then the linkage here with a special program. And if you will, that annex building that is also supporting. As far as landscaping, I know this was brought up last time, is about what is the students' experience from the parking lot, if you will, drop-off to into this entry. And to be honest, we're still in the middle of that. Last time, I think you made note that, hey, it looks pretty dry. We are introducing trees, landscape, grass areas all along this, if you will, western frontage right in through here and taking another pass at the development of this. I hope you can appreciate the pace this project has been on. I think it's been a very unique challenge. One is your staff has done an incredibly well job as far as helping us move through the programming requirements and developing these programs with Front Range and other partners, but also in that, in combining and trying to design those two things at the same time. If we go to the- Entry, not there. Let's jump to the finishes on the inside. Finishes on the inside, obviously, we started off with a student input. The student input talked a lot about the existing brand of Ferguson High, but they also talked about the refresh of the CTE program. As we moved that conversation, we presented two palettes. And the consensus coming out of the, the school leadership was really, we want this entire facility to kind of have an elevated workspace feel as opposed to the traditional beige walls in schools. So we've actually developed a palette. It's a multi-colored palette. It's represented both in a strong sense of branding of both entities, but also works together as a complete branding package for the district. Moving through the floor plan, this is kind of the entrance, this is the entrance assembly area. We've designed that assembly area to have a platform for presentations. But also to the right is a multimedia wall, which is also for peer presentation. So it works great with a variety of furniture in here. Everything from sitting groups to modular booths that can be moved around for the eating in as well as the multitude of layouts that can happen. The dark blue in the back is actually kind of a shark tank. So you're bringing that, the Ferguson High kind of project-based, test it with the real world with the CTE. This is a view from the CTE and you can start to see how the colors and the dot matrix graphic that you're seeing in this image. These are the future opportunities that we hope we're going to get the kids involved as far as how do we brand some of this stuff? And how do you create that vibe of you're in a place that's really cool, but also has a strong sense within the community and represents the great work that's going on inside? Part of that is all about transparency. You'll see a lot of glass into these professional spaces. This is the old library. Obviously, we've moved that out of the way. We've created a multiple type of settings, both with furniture, which is another next step act for us, as well as small group rooms that are in the, the deeper red areas that are at the center of those classroom clusters. When I talked about the art and music, this is the art and music. This is the old gym. One of the things- things we heard strongly from the students of Ferguson is give us a wall. We want to make things on this wall. So we've actually created, if it will become the graffiti wall or just a large expression wall, that's what that's about. To the left is the openness of the art classroom and to the right are the alcoves that take you into the science rooms. Yeah, go ahead.
That wall, I'm just, I just had an idea. Can that wall be re-graffiti every year?
Well, that's the thing. We could, we could look into that, right? So it's more of a cleanable wall at the end of every year, or it's a permanent graphic that is, you know, set from the beginning.
Okay.
I think that's what we want to look forward to in working with the students and try to get that feedback in. I don't have the elevation piece.
I apologize, I did not get in there.
Okay. So what I can, what I can say is, last time you looked at the elevations, we had a flat elevation, a rendering that kind of looks gray. And then I heard you saw a perspective that kind of looked pink. And what I can tell you is, is that the materials that we have on the large gesture that is really anchoring the corner of this is brushed aluminum. So it's going to match the window molding. So that is the part. The white looked bronze is that we took a picture of the evening sun. So it's really a, a silver-based gesture with transparency. The rest of the building, as you look to the left, is actually a blonde brick, if you will. The existing Van Buren Elementary is what's a dusty rose. And those two come together. As you move around the building, there is more of a darker red or brown concrete block to the lower. And then we have dark gray metal siding on the large base spaces and the fabrication areas. So it's definitely much more modular as far as the color, very earth toned, nothing too shocking for the neighborhood. It's actually more just in the architectural expression, expression on the exterior and the inside is where the color comes in. So with that, any questions?
Thank you. We like it.
Thank you.
Tammy, anything to wrap up with?
Let me see. No, except to just refer people again to our bond website. So tsdbond.org, we'll keep populating that. We are trying to keep up with videos. And the newest one will be from last night. I believe we're putting together, Brian's putting together a little show on the grand, or the groundbreaking from last night. Otherwise, information can be found there. We're meeting with schools consistently regarding security projects that are going on in schools now to be completed in January. And the design on all the 2020 projects is underway. We have teams meeting now out with the principals, with our project managers and our design teams. So we are, we are neck deep and running as fast as we can.
And I, I do have one question. So we've, we've tackled our, our big construction projects, Stansberry, the CTE, or the ECE at Stansberry, CTE, and the PK eight. The other thing that I consider more of like a construction project are the classroom additions down in Berthoud. And where, where do those come?
They will be 2020 projects also. Design has started and we've met with both principals, including Rick for Ivy. So they're right on tap and the goal is.
Rick's doing double duty.
He is. And we are on, scheduled to open those for fall of next year.
And will those have design, DAG groups down there? Or how are you, and you're, yeah?
Yes, we'll follow a similar process with community meetings and DAG committees and make sure we gather the input as much as we can. Those two projects specifically. Some of the other remodels are, are mainly, you know, mechanical, behind the scenes, that kind of thing. We still will have that process, but it'll be much shorter for the DAG and the community.
Thank you. Anything else, Board?
Just a question on how soon the modules get moved to high planes.
Oh, to high planes?
I saw somebody out there on the blacktop over the weekend.
Yeah, so we are, that's a very good question. So there, the crews are hired. Right now, they're getting ready to start the tear down. So once we start the tear down at Mountain View, we don't want to get too far ahead. Because once they start the tear down, it's going to go pretty quick, move over there. They're actually going to have to crane them on site. And right now, it's looking like that's going to happen about two weeks is to start that process. We're working with staff now on actually the move-in, physically move-in of the teachers and then also the shifting within the building. And right now, that looks like in November, first week in November is timeframe to get the teachers actually moved and flipped around. So, yeah, there's, physically, there's some stuff happening now, but once it goes, then it's going to be a pretty shift, a quick shift over. Yep.
Anything else? I think, do we have a couple? We do not have any written reports this time. Future agenda items, requests for information. Reminder, our next board meeting is, what month is this? October 16th. We will be in Berthoud.
Oh, that's right.
Anything else I need to remind about that meeting?
The, we will be meeting with the Berthoud trustees at 5:00 PM for dinner and conversation. And then 6 o'clock will be our meeting. It's, it'll be in the auditorium.
Well, dinner will be.
Dinner will be in the, the fax room.
Yeah.
It's chilly in there.
It is, and dark.
We're talking about the auditorium or the classroom?
No, the auditorium.
Comfortable chairs and we have all sorts of.
That's true.
Also reminding, on the, the following day, October 17th, we have a joint meeting with the Loveland City Council. That'll be here. That's our board working session. So that will be to provide the board with an update on our joint projects with the city of Loveland. And so staff will present the, there's five focus areas that we talked about last year. And so we'll provide an update to you in terms of where we're at. Dinner will precede that at 5?
Five at the latest.
At 4:45. This will be your usual study session, and that's the only agenda item. So that's, yep. It's not an extra meeting.
All right. Anybody else? No? Thank you. Hearing nothing. We're adjourned.